All right, please stand and join us to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All called to order this regular meeting of the Fergus Falls School Board, and the first item of business is to establish our forum. So clerk, could you do that, please?
Ms. See, Hermes?
President?
Natalie Flutson?
Here.
Steven Vigasaw absent. Matt Lemke here. Lane Danielson here. Melanie Cole?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Vroom.
Second? All right, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved. We have several acknowledgements, and we're gonna, first of all, congratulate Derek Abrams, the Fergus Falls Public Schools Activities Director, for receiving recognition from the Minnesota State High School League for his leadership in the development of the Why We Play program. This leadership award was in recognition of his leadership and commitment to coaches and students.
I'll read the next one.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations, student Melanie Cole, for completing 300-plus hours of attendance at Minnesota School Board Association, which is MSBA, sponsored meetings and activities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to the following for their generous donations to the Otter Angel account. An account, this is an account that's created to anonymously assist families that are unable to pay for student meals. Donald Nelson, Carolyn Schmidt, Mark and Peggy Carlson, Anna and Norm Newell, Grant and Garnet Mulhouseen, Joel Martholome, Jennifer Smedstead, Tammy Kubala, April Scharenberg, Tammy Mortenson, Elizabeth Turchin, Stacy Berta, Jamie Sim, Staria Klockswick, and Tom Ruffer. And last of all, thank you to the Fergus Falls Rotary Club for their $322.61 donation to purchase library books at the Adams School.
And with that acknowledgement on the Otter Angel account, that's in a response, I put in my column last week and put out the word that we are running low, and so far we're getting a very nice response. We're also gonna put this on Facebook, so we're still taking funds for that Otter Angel account, and it is used, not extensively, but it is definitely used, so we really appreciate that.
Cool. Thank you. And we have reports tonight, beginning with Derek Abrams, our Activities Director, who's gonna report on fall activities update.
All right, I'm just gonna do a quick overview of our fall activities. I was extremely pleased with what happened this fall, in a couple ways. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our coaches. I know I was, I had the opportunity to receive that award, but really, it's 60-plus coaches that kind of dove in with both feet following a, just, an AD just finishing up his first year to go into this program. And they really are, it's, I've seen some things already with that this fall, and the coaches, for those that don't know, the coaches are meeting with me about once a month. I go to the cities once a month and get more training, I stay a couple months ahead of coaches. Coaches are, then we work on it as a staff, and basically, this year, year one, is the coaches are basically becoming as entrenched into this program as they can before we start sharing it with kids and everything else. So they're doing a great job, very, very pleased with that, and I've already seen some of the results with these coaches. Participation, that's the first thing that's on this sheet. As you can see, we went up a little bit. We had approximately 16 more participants in our fall, just in our athletics, that's not counting, obviously, the number of students that are in the Fall Musical, the Pet Band, Band Choir, and all the other ones, orchestra. But we had 288 students. This is probably the smallest we've ever been, going into the fall anyway. Our count for State High School League at the beginning of the year was about 583. I don't think we've ever been below 600. Of course, we know we're gonna be going back up now, we're just hitting that time, but for the fact, to see that our numbers have still gone up is great. Well over half, or over half, about half of our students are in just a fall sport, and winter's actually our big one, so, no, it's good to see. The numbers are pretty comparable, volleyball jumped up quite a bit, but the rest of them are pretty comparable to what we've had in the past. We've maintained our numbers, and we've, as you'll see down here below, and we've competed, and we continue to compete, both in the CLC and our sections, and we are pretty small in most sports. I think we're one of the bottom two teams when it comes, two or three teams when it comes to football for 4A, we're one of the bottom two or three when it comes to basketball. And we've obviously succeeded in all of those, and many of our other sports. So we're playing like a big school. Just as a comparison, a town like Detroit Lakes, which most still believe we're bigger than DL, because we've always have been, DL's about 900 kids.
Derek, that uptick in volleyball, is that?
Yep.
I mean, 'cause the past three, four, or three years, it's been pretty consistent. Is this uptick mainly because of the newer grade, the next grade level coming up?
Some of it, yep, and just maintaining, you always have some that, you know, don't come out, and then that new class comes in, and so we have a bigger, a bigger class that did come in. But people are staying out, which was very good to see. Sportsmanship awards, just this fall, out of seven sports, we won it in four. Girls Swimming and Diving, Girls Tennis, Girls Soccer, and Boys Soccer. CLC Performers of the Week, Abby Lemke, Caitlin Ritchie in Girls Tennis. We do also have numerous All-Conference and Honorable Mention in every sport, which I have, I have forty there. Football, All-District, we don't have Conference in football, that's District. For the third straight year, we were District Champions, and also Steve Olson won the Midwest Red District Coach of the Year for the third straight year. Many position players, All-District and Honorable Mention, but one, I'll mention here, too, is we did have the Midwest Red District Player of the Year, which was Nathan Ront. So, a lot of honors throughout that. State Tournament participants came from our Girls Swim Team, our Football Team, did make it to the Section Championship this year in the history. Girls Swimming had state participants, Cameron Appert in Diving, Madison Hubert, Julia Swanson, Bryn Donae, and Ella Childs on the 200 medley relay. Madison Hubert, also herself, in the 100 backstroke, Ella Childs in the 200 IM, and then, once again, Ella, Bryn Donae, Madison Hubert, and Emma Cakegritz in the 200 free relay. So that was a lot of fun to go down there for those three days and see all of them swim. But overall, like I said, not just the numbers participating and the success, obviously, that we're having, there's, out of the seven sports, four of them fight to try to get home field, if you will, for the playoffs, that means you're the top half of the section. All four of them this year did that. Girls Soccer, Girls, Boys Soccer, Football, and, I don't even know where it is.
Volleyball.
Volleyball. So all of them did host a playoff game this year, which means in the top half of our section. The rest of them have a set site, have a one-day thing like swimming and cross-country. We did host the cross-country section meet, it was our turn this year, and those guys did a fabulous job. If you remember, that was our freak blizzard at the end of October, and it was the most miserable conditions, but we got more emails from coaches, from the section, from everybody else that just said what a fabulous job. I would love to stand up here and take credit for that, but I had very little to do with that. Nikki Weldy, Derek Meyer, Randy Hansen, they took care of that and did a fabulous job in horrible conditions, so. Any questions?
No, it's great. I didn't realize the sportsmanship awards, I just wasn't on my radar, and I'm just so proud of that.
And I looked, and they haven't updated, they didn't put last year's update, but I remember reporting last year that we had, we were like second in the CLC in history. Before that, we had 70, and we have like 10-plus years of less time in the CLC as other schools. And so, it really does, and they, and for the most part, they really do take their, their time to look at that, and it's a reflection on our team, so this puts us over 80 now, since we joined the CLC, so that's, that's really good.
Sounds very positive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we'll have a report from Scott Paulbeck, our elementary principal at Adams and McKinley School.
Good evening, everybody. So I was looking at my calendar, looking ahead, looking back, to see what I might wanna share with you tonight, and I think we could call next week, next week at McKinley and Adams, maybe Music in Our Schools Week, because we have many, many music programs going on for our younger students. Beginning with our kindergarten class at McKinley on Monday, our music teacher, Geraldine Lysing, has been working hard preparing the kids. She's going to do, I think, four different programs throughout the course of the day on Monday, two classes, two classes, two classes, and then three classes. That's all gonna happen Monday, so we're gonna have a busy school, lots of parents, grandparents coming and going. We'll set up chairs in our, in the music room, which is the original gymnasium to the original McKinley building, and we'll, we'll fit 'em in there, and we'll have an exciting day. Also, next week, at Adams School, six of our eight second-grade classrooms will be giving some programs, music programs. You might be wondering, well, what about the other two? You know, you said six of eight second-grade classrooms will be giving a program. The other two choose to do something in the spring. And then if you're wondering, well, what about the first graders? Mr. Jacobson does spring programs with all the first graders, and Mrs. Lysing as well with the first graders at McKinley will do something in the spring. So all of our kindergarteners, and then about 75% of our second graders will be involved in some sort of program next week. And then our last day of school, before our break, we have assemblies at both McKinley and Adams, and we do a sing-along, and we think that there might be a Santa visit again this year, especially at one of those buildings. Also, I wanted to mention tonight, you've heard by now of our STEAM team. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, and we are now on our second group of 40 kids, second group of 40 students participating in our STEAM team at Adams School. This is a group that meets every Monday for four consecutive Mondays, and the adults that are involved in the program have shirts that say STEAM, STEAM Team Adams School. It's, it's been handled very well. There's many Adams School adults involved in delivering this program, along with parents who volunteer, but two that I need to recognize, the two that have kind of taken the leadership role with this is Kim Walbotney, who's a first-grade teacher at Adams School, and then John Dane, the second-grade teacher at Adams School. So again, more than just the two of them, but I did wanna recognize those two for the role that they've taken, it was kind of their idea. They got it going, they communicated with families, there was the signup, they were overwhelmed with how many kids signed up, therefore, they thought, what do we do with these 80 kids, 80-plus? So they decided, well, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a couple different sessions. Now, when this session is over here soon, before Christmas break, I'm sure they have some other things planned for later this year as well. Wanted to mention that last week, this is almost becoming an annual tradition, all of our kindergarten students and all of our first-grade kids were bussed downtown to a center for the arts for what's called Dance and Dessert through the Fergus Falls School of Dance, and there was an anonymous donor. I think she was anonymous, I'm not going to mention her, I won't mention her name tonight at least, but she donated $200 to get the cost from $3 per student down to $2 per student to help that kindergarten group. So thank you to her, and thank you for all of our, you know, I think about the kids that participate, that are up on stage, that are performing. Not too many years ago, those kids were in the audience as kindergarteners and first graders watching this performance, and so you can't help but think sometimes maybe a seed is planted. But I know that the kids and the staff, too, who are there with their students, they really enjoy the movement, the costumes, the colors, the lighting, the music, and it's an experience that I think a lot of those kids would probably never have unless they were, if it weren't for our staff, who would, who'd bring them to that performance.
And do they get dessert?
I don't think so. Yeah. Although, well, wait a second. I wonder if when the kids are leaving the performance, they, they might be hammed some little treat of some sort. It's a little bit different than if you attend in the evening and then go across the street and have some serious dessert. And then, the last thing I'll just mention, I think I may have mentioned this the last time I was here, but then at that point, maybe it was an upcoming event, I don't recall, but, so a while ago, we had American Education Week, and during that, we always have a food drive at Adams School. It's just a one-week food drive, and we collected over 900 food items that are then picked up by the local Salvation Army, and our kids do a nice job with that. Each day, we have a new total that we can, Ms. Cindy, our secretary, reads over the intercom, and it's really neat to see the food come in. Also, we enjoyed having all of our, most all of our parents were coming and having lunch with their child during that week, both at McKinley School and at Adams School, and we have a schedule, so the parents know, you know, which, which day is their day to come. We always tell them, hey, if you can't make it on your child's scheduled day, please choose another day that week to come and have lunch with your child. So there's a number of staff, especially at Adams School, we need to set up additional tables and chairs in the gymnasium that we never set up normally, so a lot of, a lot of additional help, hire custodians and a few other staff members at Adams to make that week run once a week. So that's my report for this evening. If there's any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we will hear the report from Tindy Run, the elementary principal of Cleveland.
Good evening. Hello. I feel like it's been a while since we've been here to report, but some other things going on, but I just have some things I'd like to highlight and let you in on what's going on at Cleveland during these upcoming weeks. The week of Thanksgiving, we started our annual service learning project, and we call that Presents for Pets, and it's, we invite Jaclyn from the Humane Society to come over, and she brings one of her furry friends with her, all decked out for Christmas, and we do a little interview with Jaclyn to help our students learn the needs of the Humane Society, how it benefits our community, and some of the functions, and then also ways that we can contribute to the Humane Society to help that effort or support that effort. And over the course of the next month, up until December 19, students are invited to bring in donations that will go to benefit the Humane Society, and they learn that some of our old bath towels and rugs can benefit those pets and the functions of the Humane Society as much as an animal toy or a bag of cat or dog food can. So they ask lots of interesting questions of Jaclyn during that time that she's joining us, but it's a great way that our kids learn how to give back to our community in a fun, fun way that's relevant to them. We always have a show of hands, how many of you have adopted a pet from the Humane Society or, or gotten and volunteered, and it's always kind of amazing to me how many kids and families really do have a connection with our Humane Society at home, so, fun way. Our donations are coming in leaps and bounds right now. We've had some recent learning opportunities that have involved the Science Museum of Minnesota. Our third-grade classes attended an assembly on engineering where they learned the importance of the design of materials and the different, how things are designed to serve a certain purpose. For example, she had brought, the presenter brought a couple different pair of gloves and talked about, you know, what would these gloves be used for as compared to this other set of gloves, and one, material-protected hands, but really allowed for dexterity, and another set of gloves, which were the metal stainless steel mesh gloves, you know, what was the design of that? And those were designed to protect hands when you're using sharp tools like a butcher in a meat market. So she had some really relevant activities that involved the kids and got them thinking, so I really think they went away with some newfound information that day. Thanks to Otter Tail Corporation, they sponsored an assembly titled Energy Connections that our fourth and fifth-grade classes attended, and that presenter talked about all the different ways that energy is created, wind energy, coal, electrical energy, and then the benefits of each one of them. And she had audience participation, different volunteers came up on stage and pedaled the bike, and as she kept flipping switches on, that bike became a little bit more difficult to pedal, and then as she conserved energy and turned switches off, then the bike peddler could report which was easier and more difficult. So again, just very relevant information for this, for our fourth and fifth graders, and just a big thank you to Otter Tail Corporation for sponsoring that opportunity. Tomorrow, the Minnesota Science Museum is moving into a classroom at Cleveland for the next three days. We're gonna, our, our fourth graders will be having a general assembly tomorrow morning, and then each of the fourth-grade classes is scheduled in for a residency experience, so they have a little bit more of a hands-on opportunity to learn. Again, this is themed around engineering, and we're all excited to kind of see what that experience brings. But thank you to our Otter PTO for sponsoring that earlier assembly for third graders and now the one starting tomorrow for fourth graders. It's through their, their efforts that is making that possible. This Thursday, we have our, our fourth graders presenting their first concert of their musical careers in orchestra. Each year, they start practicing right at the end of September, and they have about nine or 10 general practices or rehearsals together, and then they perform this holiday concert. And we get to hear kind of the, the songs that they've learned in progression and learning their skills, along with a couple of familiar holiday numbers that they perform for their families, their classmates, and then half of our third grade will attend that as well. If you didn't see the, the Fergus Daily Journal today, there's a really neat article on there that features our Lego robotics team. Thanks to Jesse Thorsted, Bill Swanson, and Melissa Rosentrader, they have worked with some small groups of students over the course of this fall, and learning, they, they built their own robots, their little robots that have been programmed to perform different functions. One of the teams that has a robot titled the Awesome Otter Robot did compete recently, and they're, they showed off their robots last Thursday after school, and invited families and teachers, and the kids did a great job talking about what they've learned, and then explaining what their robot was gonna do, and then put it into motion, and there was that pause and a total anticipation, and then when it did the function, you know, cheers, we're glowing. So we had a lot of fun last Thursday after school when the kids showed off their robots. And then, lastly, we have our Christmas sing-along the last day of school before the holiday break, and so all of the music classes, when they're meeting with their music instructors, are practicing their songs, and everybody will have a, a part in that, in this Christmas sing-along this year, so that's the next exciting thing that's happening. That's our overview for tonight. Any questions? Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from our secondary principal, Tindy Runke.
Hey, good evening, everybody. As Tindy mentioned before, it's been a while since we've had a chance to get in front of you here again, so I just wanna go back a little ways here and offer a very public, special thank you to the school board and my fellow administrators for the opportunity that I had to, at the end of October, to go over to Norway for 10 days, to visit some sister schools over there that we've established a relationship over the course of the last two years, and it was just absolutely a fantastic experience. And learned so much, and my wife Beth got to come along as well, and of course, as many of you know, she works for Lakeland Mental Health, this office here in schools in relation to school-based mental health, and she got an opportunity to meet with representatives from their schools over there as well, to learn about, you know, some of the programming that they're doing to help their students as well. So, just a fantastic experience. I think more will develop over the course of the year here, and we'll probably come back and share with you in bits and pieces, but they've got some great things going on over there that we're learning about and learning from, and so more to come on that topic.
I expect you to be speaking Norwegian, though.
Yeah. Long way from there. Luckily, we have the tailors with us that were built-in interpreters for the whole trip, so, I haven't got that down yet.
Mr. Maggie, would you say internships, apprenticeships was probably one of the big takeaways?
The, the biggest takeaway from their sister high school that we have a relationship with is they're a very technical-focused high school, and for the last 25 years, they've done a fantastic job in relationship to internships, work experience, apprenticeships, getting their students kind of out of school and into the community and into their workforce, basically, and so that, that's kind of the main area that we're trying to learn from them on, on some of the, some of the great programming that they have in that area.
Do they have something somewhat close to our STEM program, or?
They, they have probably, you know, that times about five.
Okay.
They probably have that program that's divided up into like a healthcare area, an electronics area, a manufacturing area, and so they're doing, doing that. And their high schools over there are very much in the process of recruiting students, so this high school is known for that focus, and so they get students from, you know, basically a 500,000-person area, like, similar to our Twin Cities metro area, and so they're drawing from that whole area to come to this particular high school for these programs. So it helps in relationship to sheer numbers to be able to recruit for those programs as well. Other stuff that's going on around here, our high school just had a fantastic food drive here recently. They recorded 1,530 pounds that they were able to donate to the local food shelf here. So a special thank you to Mr. Tilke, our student council, and basically, our whole high school that really worked hard on that project. And our middle school took a little different twist with that whole food drive this year, and they kind of worked through the cooperative agreement with Service Food and Community Ed to go out and gather particular food items that they could donate back for the United Way Backpack Program that helps, you know, feed some of the area students here over the course of some weekends and extended breaks. So that was very successful as well, they did a fantastic job with that. Both levels are involved in penny wars over the course of this week, so they're having all kinds of fun, again, raising money at the start of the holidays here, to go back to places like Salvation Army, Toys for Tots, and other, other local programs like that. And each year, they usually take an opportunity to have the students offer some input on where some of those funds should be going. So it's not always the same programs each and every year, they kind of take a look at that and spread it around a little bit. Also, our high school student council was able to host the Area Student Council Conference this last Wednesday on December 6. They had over 285 students outside of our building come in, along with our middle school and high school student council members, and it was just a great day. Superintendent Ness and I poked our heads in there a couple times, and it was just busy. They were meeting in corners and coming up with ideas, and the advisors also had a chance to get it together and meet, which of course is very productive as they're comparing things from school to school. So, wonderful day there, and as part of that day, they had a little kind of charity fundraiser there as well. They brought in 125 pounds of toiletries that they could offer to the area food shelf here as well. So just a fantastic opportunity to give back to all the area schools there. So just a fantastic opportunity to give back to all the area schools there. Our seventh graders get a unique opportunity tomorrow morning. They are heading out to our local theater here to get a private screening of the movie Wonder. And I've heard great reports concerning that movie, and this also is a, is a book that was read by all of our seventh graders. So this is kind of a follow-up activity for them to, now that they've had a chance to read the book, go out and see the production. And so they're really looking forward to that tomorrow. Of course, we've already started the high school registration process for next year already. We're already talking about 2018-19, if you can believe that. We've asked our departments to turn in course changes that they might be looking at for next year. So our council and office is well on the way to getting that process going again. And this year, there'll be probably a particular focus on some changes within our art department and our tech ed department, as those departments are up for curriculum review come this next year. So we're looking forward to that. And then finally, of course, if anybody's out there watching right now, you have the opportunity to join us this evening for our high school choir concert, which of course is always fabulous. I watched a little bit this afternoon. It's gonna be great. So that's at 7:00 here this evening for anybody that can join us. And also, next Monday night at 7:00 as well will be our middle school choir concert. So we've had, what, three Mondays in a row here in the month of December to try to get all our concerts in. So great and busy times going on. Questions for me?
Thank you. Well, we'll move on to the reports from the board members. I will report first, and we had a special education cooperative meeting today. One of the highlights of the agenda was that the Special Ed Cooperative Director, Shannon Erickson, says special education is celebrating 60 years of being established statewide and nationwide. And so she did some, some research, brought the initial statute on it, and then we just talked about some of the local changes that we've seen and how programs developed. So that was pretty interesting. She also brought forward the child count numbers, which is a big deal in that entity. The first of December to count how many heads and, and do an unduplicated student count and compare it to last year. And so the numbers are not yet refined, but there is, again, an increase in utilization of special education services across our, our cooperative area. So that was kind of the, the highlight there. As far as negotiations go, we have nothing concrete to report. We're working with negotiations with the bus company and the principals group, and we'll discuss that in, in our work session. So nothing resolved there. Region one, there's no substantial information to report. Again, just a monthly meeting to review personnel changes and the utilization programs, look at the funding and how everything's going and that, but nothing out of the ordinary. So that's a short summary of my different involvements. Any questions? Very none, and we'll move on to Missy's board reports.
Okay, so Curriculum Review Committee hasn't met this month. And then for Legislative Liaison, I don't have anything to report there, but I thought that those resolutions are going to fit under that.
Very good. Any questions for Missy? All right, reports from Blaine Danielson.
544 Foundation will be meeting this coming Thursday, so nothing to report there. Meeting confer will be meeting tomorrow afternoon, and probably the main thing there, we'll be looking at trying to firm up next year's schedule and getting final approval on that so we can bring that to the board. So that'll be tomorrow for meeting confer, so I'll be able to report on that next time. And then as far as buildings and grounds, a couple of big things there, I guess, just as far as we'll be talking about those in the work session tonight. But the main thing, I think you all got emails from Mark earlier this, or last week regarding the pool, is in need of some work, so we'll be looking at probably getting into that this summer. So we'll be following up a little bit more on that in the work session tonight. So that's what I've got.
All right, any questions for Blaine? Natalie Koonzner?
Policy Committee has not met and may have to launch committee.
All right, very good. Matthew Lemke?
Minnesota High School, they did not meet here in December. Their next meeting won't be until, it looks like February, where they will be meeting again. So nothing really to report for them. And Ice Country Service Club meets this Thursday, so I have nothing to report for them either.
All right. Superintendent Ness?
I can comment a little bit for Steve on staff development. We have 20, a pool of dollars of $25,000 that staff members apply to, get approved or not approved. Well, they've, they've, a lot of staff understand that they have to put their application in early now because it's competitive. And so we have used those dollars, the staff development committee has used those dollars, but a lot of this dollars isn't spent till April, May, or June. So, so they're just doing a better job of planning, make sure they get their funds in. Our main focus at the last meeting was to finalize the January 15 workshop. So Martin Luther King Jr. Workshop, when, when students are off for that holiday, our staff uses that as an in-service day. So we have a full day planned from Otter Tail County Resources, many relicensure components, positive behavior things, guided reading, there's some Google, Google Slam-type things. There's, you're gonna help out with some workout for our staff over the lunch period, PLC meetings, faculty meetings, we got, we got a lot, a full day planned. And, and we, that is a day for staff to plan full-time for in-service, because the next Monday is the end of the quarter, and that's a work time, because we're ending the first semester, starting the new semester. So they have courses that they have to get the grading done and then get prepared for new, new students coming in. So that's a full work day. The other end of here, Blaine had mentioned the meeting, confer's meeting tomorrow regarding the calendar, and Wednesday, Health and Safety, we're meeting there. And I forget how long it's been since we met, because it's only one meeting in November and December. But I don't think we mentioned our support staff of the year and congratulated Sue Lewis and Tony Cantrell. And they're just, Sue Lewis has just done an amazing job with the synergy, going from power school to synergy. She would be, she'd be a key person related to that. And Tony Cantrell is sort of the super AI around here, does, does a multitude of different things, everything from watching in-school suspension, detention, bus supervision after school, he's roaming the halls, writing reports to principals about who's in the building, who shouldn't be in the building, all this type of stuff. So he's just really, does whatever you ask with a positive attitude, and that's invaluable. So congratulations to Sue and Tony.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on then to our general consent items, and for consideration for approval, we have these several things combined, the minutes from our November 20, 2017 school board meeting, and then the bills and treasures report. So Natalie, do you have an update for us?
Sure. We are sitting down quite a bit from last month. December is typically a low month due to the reimbursements from the government. You don't typically get as much as we normally do each month. And then December 31st is our low point, so we're paying a big chunk of the bond again. So I see we approve it.
Okay. Very good. And then we have some personnel moves.
Yes, we have a number of personnel items again here. Faith Tisvor is retiring as of the end of the first semester, which is January 17. We have support staff resignations. Julie Bakken is the secretary of the district office, and Amanda Carr Johnson is a special ed paraprofessional. Minor adjustments on teaching schedule, Josh Sarnberg, secondary teacher, is increasing by .1148, which is, he's doing additional time for reach, which means students of need and, and helping students adjusting and getting their credits. That's the best way to describe, both socially and emotionally, trying to help them adjust and get so they can, their behaviors get out of their way so they can be successful academically. Then, let's see, Toby Seelin is a long-term sub for a maternity leave, so that's, that FTE. And then we had coaching hires. We have Kevin Pearson as the recommended hire for baseball. Ben Jurgens had girls golf. Matt McGovern had boys golf, so recommend those. All of these personnel recommend approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve the general consent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the general consent item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. And we're bringing back for our review the, a motion to approve the audit for the fiscal year 2017. This financial audit was reviewed at our last meeting, and now we have an opportunity to approve that. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the audit? Anybody find any mistakes by the auditors?
I read it from cover to cover. It was good.
All right. Hearing no comments, all in favor of approving that fiscal year 17 for Fergus Falls Public Schools financial audit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And then we are moving into new business where we would entertain a motion to approve the Lakeland Mental Health Center agreements with our independent school district, effective from January 1st of 2018 to the end of the year 2018. And this is for two school-based mental health practitioners, one mental health professional, and then one mental health slash chemical dependency professional. So would someone provide that motion? All right.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I can fill in a little bit here. There's, it's an annual contract. We, we combine resources from the school district, Lakeland, and the county to provide these services. So it's a, it's a, it's a great deal for us, if you will. We share the cost, and it's a, it's a 2% cost of living increase from the last year. So that's what the increase would be.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions about the motion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And then we have a resolution, and this is our resolution on the retirement of Faith Tisvor. I'll read this resolution. Whereas Faith Tisvor began employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 1975 and worked until 1977 as a teacher's aide, then she returned from November 28th, 1988 as a Title I paraprofessional. And whereas Faith has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 30.5 years, and whereas Faith has done an excellent job as a teacher's aide and Title I paraprofessional in the school district, and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Faith Tisvor for 30 and a half years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone out with that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll out the resolution, move for its adoption.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Clerk, will you please take a roll?
Melanie Cole?
Yes?
Blaine Danielson, yes? Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Natalie Koonzner?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Very good. At this point in the meeting, I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Lemke, as I have another obligation that I plan to return.
Okay, so we need to approve the bids on the heat pump replacement at Adam's School. Mark Maston, do you want to give some information on this?
Sure, we received two bids, one from Comstock Construction, the other one from Peterson Mechanical out of Michi. The two bids ranged from $964,000 from Comstock to a million and a half from Petersons. We had budgeted about, or estimated that this would be about a million-dollar project. So the 964 is coming in pretty good for us, and so I would recommend that we accept the bid and move on with the project.
So do we have a motion to accept the bid from Comstock?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to number four, we have a resolution to fully fund special education services in Minnesota. How do you want me to?
Well, I can give, I can give the general idea. It's a rather lengthy resolution. So we have one that is urging the Minnesota to fund, fund special education. The next resolution is very, very similar, and it's a federal government urging the federal government to work this. And this is working with Minnesota School Board Association, kind of the school districts, they're asking all the school districts in the state to pass these resolutions to urge the, our state legislature to fund education. As an example, the, the terminology in school is called cross-subsidy. So what's happening is, across the state, because special education is not fully funded, school districts are spending $815 on average per student. Now, this is all the students in the school, not the special ed students. It's all the students in the school. They're taking out of their general fund $815 a pupil unit to pay for the expenditures of special education. The federal government, there was a promise back, way back in '75, that they would fund 40% of special education costs. They've never been over 19%. It's usually been, it's been in that 17% to 19% is my understanding. So these two resolutions were urging that you pass, which will go on to MSBA, that we will tell them that we pass these resolutions. And so when they lobby the state, when they lobby the federal government, they could say, here's the power behind, we, we need something to happen here. That's what these resolutions are about.
So on the first one, I think I'll just read the last two, "Now therefore..." "Now therefore be it resolved that we urge the governor and the legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increase in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state level. And now therefore be it resolved that there is an urgency, the Minnesota Legislature, to convene a task force to work on special education funding, specifically with a focus on the impacts of the new special education funding formula that project, projected cross-subsidy and recommendations with a timeline to eliminate the cross-subsidy." With that, would somebody out with that resolution move for its adoption?
I'll out the resolution, move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Missy on that one. Any comments? I'm gonna save my comments to the federal one.
Well, I did ask Mark what was the cross-subsidy here, because this is just a Minnesota average. And for our school district, it's about $631.83 per student, for the cross-subsidy is. So it's just a significant amount of money.
So if people wanted to add it up, it's roughly about $1.8 million in cross-subsidy in Fergus Falls. About.
3,000 students.
It's coming out of our general fund.
Correct. Our general fund to cross-subsidy special education.
And, and I want people to understand this, we're not complaining about paying for special ed. We're not saying that. We want to provide education for them. We need to provide education for them. What we're frustrated with is, we had promises from the state and federal government, and they are not living up to that promise.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson, yes?
Yes.
Natalie Koonzner?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Item number five is a resolution to fully fund special education services. This is for the federal government. And we should go down to Bead Burke, we'll go down to the last one.
Sure.
Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Senate cause, cause a copy of this resolution to be delivered to all United States representative and senators representing Minnesota in the Congress of the United States.
Did you read one of those?
One more, too? Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the state of Minnesota calls upon the Congress of the United States to pass appropriate legislation in order to increase funding for federal special education mandates to meet the urgent financial special education needs of our cities and towns. Somebody out with that resolution move for its adoption?
I will.
Missy, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Natalie? Uh, discussion? For, for mine here, this was really interesting today, is in our clippings, we got the US News and World Report just came out, and it's gonna be December, about funding- funding state education finance system. Uh, so this is nationally. And, um, so they did a report on this and so from last year to this year, last year there's about 14 states that actually special education went down in funding, although they're increasing their special education needs. Uh, this year, 21 states are providing less funding. Uh, the federal government has, I think this year in their 2016, um, they do a cross subsidy. Minnesota is required to do a cross subsidy of special education. I believe their amount that they're going to, um, this is discretionary for the federal government so they can choose to, to help or take away from special education costs. And, uh, they're going to be down to about around 6.4%, 6.9% for the state average. And so, and so it's becoming a, a warning sign, I think, that most school districts are trying to say is that since 2003 to current, it's almost doubled the amount of cost. And so that cross subsidy has just increased almost double. And so, um, there's just some real concern. And again, it's not about providing special education, it's about the funding of special education. And the concerns that I think all school boards across the United States have, um, with this, um, becoming a big issue, uh, just with budgets in general. So, I don't know if anybody else has any further comments there. Roll call, please.
Lane Danielson, yes. Natalie Koonzum?
Yes.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Mrs. Herms?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Thank you. Item number six is support the purchase and exchange of school trust lands and the Boundary Waters canoe area wilderness proceeding in tandem. Whereas the Minnesota School Trust lands were granted by the United States to Minnesota at statehood with the intent to provide a source of continued revenue now and into the future for public schools. And whereas approximately 83,000 acres of the school trust lands have been locked up in the Boundary Waters canoe area wilderness and unable to generate revenue for the trust for over 50 years. And whereas the Superior National Forest, by agreement with the state of Minnesota, manages these lands as interwoven fabric of the BWCAW landscape. And whereas there are limitations imposed by the Wilderness Act directly conflicting with the state law that directs school trust lands manage to secure the maximum long-term economic return. And whereas a hybrid model has been adopted that includes a combination of land sale and exchange to transfer school trust lands located in the BWCAW to the United States Forest Service. And whereas a Plan B has been developed as a three-step proposal to accomplish the purchase component of the hybrid model whereby the Conservation Fund would, one, purchase private forest lands in St. Louis County and, two, exchange their parcels for trust, school trust lands located in the BWCAW Boundary Waters. And three, the USFS would then buy the formal school trust land from the Conserva- Conservation Fund with funding from the Land Water Conservation Fund. And whereas it is evaluated by multiple stakeholders that the purchase and exchange of school trust lands proceed on a similar timeline and therefore be it resolved that the Fergus Falls School Board supports a combination of land sale and exchange to transfer school trust lands located in the BWCAW to the USFS using the Plan B model to ensure that thousands of acres of private forest land in northern Minnesota will be transferred to the school trust. Plan B is an alternative, alternative that provides for a continuous source of revenue for the Minnesota schools, allowing for a sustained yield and stable employment for industries and provides thousands of acres of land for public recreation. Do you want to talk on that, Vice Chair?
Well, I'm not sure how, uh, much I can do, but it's basically a land exchange and so what, uh, they've come to this agreement, they're asking for school boards to support that so they can move forward. Uh, eventually, uh, this trust land will provide dollars to school districts, uh, you know, through the management of this fund and forestry, you know, so you're, you're having forests that are being harvested and, and there's generating revenue that will come to the school district. So, Mark, do you have anything to add?
I can add something.
Yeah, there we go.
Sure, I'll give you a little history.
Okay.
That, uh, when Congress, uh, when, before Minnesota could become a state, um, then Congress thought that nobody would ever move to Minnesota or very few people would. And so where most states only had, uh, one section in each township, that was school trust land. In Minnesota, it was two sections in each township. And so for some townships, that might be a lake in Otterton County in the middle of the lake. But, um, so we had extra in our state and, and that was what the point of it was to support schools.
So how would these ones be dispersed to the different school districts? I mean, at, at a certain percentage, equal amounts, how would that take place?
That's from the management company that would do that. I, I am not, I couldn't.
I do believe it gets individually divided up though between the school districts.
And then does it go to just the general fund or, I mean, is there a certain?
I think it's, I shouldn't answer that because of my.
To be determined on that one.
Good.
Some of the current program, which is not involved in this, um, generates millions of dollars. And, uh, in our district, I saw a chart that showed $87,000 is directly coming to us, but it doesn't come directly to us in a check. It goes to the state and then they use it to, as part of our general dollars. So basically it's, it's, it's really payments to the state to help ensure that they continue to make payments to school districts rather than just, here's a cut to Fergus, here's to Underwood, here's to Ross. And I think they've been using student enrollment as their, as their device.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Would somebody off of this resolution move for its adoption?
I'll off the resolution, move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Herms?
Yes.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Lane Danielson, yes. Natalie Koonzum?
Yes.
The resolution passes.
Item number seven is a resolution establishing a combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will be, remain open for the voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Do I need to read the?
No, I can explain. Um, so with a, a new legislative requirement is that if, uh, the, any school district is going to run a special election and you're going to change the polling places, you have to have a resolution at your December meeting. So that, that's what this is. Uh, we don't know if we're having a special, uh, special, uh, anything, you know, operating levy, bond, but in case we did, we would go to the exact same format that we did at our 2013, I believe it was, uh, bond referen- outdoor facility bond referendum for the 2.75 million. And that was, that was eight polling places, one at the fire hall, the armory, uh, the M State Hillcrest Academy, uh, Sowindor Church, Lake City Shooting Center, Dalton Community Hall, Orwell Town Hall. So we go from 24 polling places, uh, that is in the community right now or the district right now, down to eight. And this is only if we ran a special election and the district or the school board has, we don't have intent at this point to run one, but it's just in case. This does not affect the November 6th, 2018 elect, the general election next November. Every polling place is open, they're all from seven to eight. This does not affect that. This is only if we happen to run a special election. That's what this resolution says.
And then Jerry, we have, we have to do this every year, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
December.
Yep.
No matter what.
It's an annual resolution.
Right. So would somebody like to off of this resolution, move for its adoption?
I will. I'll off of that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Herms?
Yes.
Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Lane Danielson, yes. Natalie Koonzum?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to a public hearing in about 30.
Nope, we can jump into the technology one right away.
Wanting to technology, okay.
Yep.
So we're going to go into a public hearing on technology plan and internet safety policy meeting. And, uh, Mark Maston, you are.
I'm going to start off by saying that, uh, school districts are required to do a hearing on, uh, their technology, uh, plan and so forth, internet safety. Uh, it dates back about nearly 20 years ago, back when the internet was starting to become more prevalent in everybody's lives. Uh, and many, many parents were very upset with the possibility of their children seeing nasty things on the internet. And the federal government then came out with the Declaration of the Child, um, Internet Protection Act, also known as SIPA. And to help facilitate that, uh, at that time, uh, they created a thing called the E-Rate Program and whereby they now tax your telecommunications bills and then school districts apply for funding through that surface. And, uh, therefore you can build your internet and within your schools and at the same time put in a filter to prevent the nasties from coming through. Uh, this committee was then therefore kind of created, or excuse me, this hearing was, uh, created basically to help parents become more aware of what is the dangers out there on the internet and what the school district was doing to prevent their children from being exposed to these things on the internet. And of course, uh, that law was many years ago and here we are sitting in 2017 and I think most parents have got it, have got it figured out. But the hearing is still, goes on. So to give you an idea, back in 2007, here's our technology plan. It is about 40 pages, well, 47 pages long. And it describes what we have, what we want to do, who's involved, who are our partners, what are, what is our plans, how we're going to communicate it to the public, how we're going to do it to ourselves, what kind of policies are you developing, uh, who are your staff and skills, what are their job descriptions? You get the draft. 47 pages 10 years ago. Here's our technology plan that's in effect now. It's a page and, two pages and a little bit more. Okay? So basically we get. My point here is then to fulfill the commitment of the hearing is we have two basic policies. We have our policy number 5.4, which is available on our website, uh, that is called the Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. It basically warns people about what they cannot and cannot do. And yes, we do have filters. One of the main things in here is, is how are we going to filter out obscene materials, child pornography or something that is harmful to minors? So that, this policy was initiated back in 2001, or excuse me, 1996 and last updated on February 19th, 2015. So if parents are interested, this is out on there, it's, um, policy number 5.4. We also have a policy 560, District Technology Code of Ethics. This is more of an internal document to tell people that, uh, they can't steal software, they have to use the network appropriately and, uh, things like email and voicemails are property of the school district and cannot be, uh, you should be warning you so that you can't use it to operate a business and be surprised that the school district objects. Uh, this policy was adopted and also in 1996. It was last updated on the 13th. It is available on our website, policy 560. So if any parents were in attendance here at this hearing, want to express their opinions to the school board, they may now move.
Hearing now?
Hearing then.
We'll move on to Fergus Falls Public School Taxes Accountable.
Yep. The process for levying taxes, it starts in September when the school board adopted what they call a proposed levy. That proposed levy then goes through a, a process with the state and, uh, in, I think it was November, you, um, taxpayers would receive a notice in the mail saying what their taxes were going to go up. And, uh, at that point in time then, that also stated that, uh, parents or community members could attend today's meeting and, uh, either object or raise their concerns or even praise the school board if they wanted to on their taxes. It's, it's a hearing. And so basically, uh, I think the reason that there isn't anybody here is because we announced that our taxes more likely will go down and, uh, the final numbers have come in now from the state and, uh, we're seeing a reduction of 1.8%. Uh, the dollar amount, uh, that would get approved tonight after this, uh, hearing would be $6,551,847.46. Uh, that's a reduction of about $120,000 from last year. So it's, it's not a major piece, but I think it's still welcome news that, uh, taxes are not going up here for the school district. Over and above that, uh, there is a new, um, tax credit that will be applied to farms only. And, uh, so, uh, $272,449 will be distributed somehow through the tax system. I do not know that formula, how it affects each farmer, but, uh, the school district will then lose that amount of money in levy but gain it in state aid. So it's no effect to the school district, but it is a tax relief, uh, piece for the, uh, the farmers. Uh, in terms of total burden to the community, uh, the tax rate is not really a rate that is used anywhere other than here in Fergus Falls. I use it as kind of a barometer. And, uh, it, it's 30.6% and, uh, of our tax capacity. Last year that was 32.1. So you can see if you were, if you were at the gas pump and looking at, at it, that you used to buy gas at 32.1 and now you're paying 30.6, you kind of understand how that effect is. Uh, the highest we've ever been, believe it or not, was in the, uh, 1999 when that number was 56.7. And huge tax relief that took place a few years after that by the state of Minnesota. We had turned around and raised it a little bit on refurbishing this building, doing our outdoor facilities and, and, but still 56.7 versus 30.6. Uh, we're, we're not a big burden in comparison to 1999 on taxes. Uh, the, the $6.5 million, uh, seems like the high number two, but, uh, back in, uh, 2010, the amount was $6,200,000. So after, this is fiscal 19, so nine years difference and, uh, the only 200 and some odd thousand dollars difference total in taxes. So I think the school district, um, does a pretty good job with its money. So that's the end of the hearing. Anybody who has questions from the public? Hearing none? I turn it back.
So we have number, item number eight is a levy for taxes payable for 2018. It's set at $6,551,847.46. Uh, with that, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Um, following this meeting, we will go into a work session for, uh, buildings and grounds, uh, online 18 requests, staffing and school board committee reps for 2018. Um, our next regular school board meeting will be our reorganizational meeting followed by a regular school board meeting and that will happen, uh, Monday, January 8th, 2018 at 5:00 PM right here at the Otter Community Room. I can't do secondary school. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Let's add one more meeting. Our long-term facility committee meeting will re-up on January 8th. So in January and February, we, our long-term facility committee will meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So in January and February, we are going, our long-term facility committee will meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So in January and February. So, and that'll be at 6:30. So that gives the board time to have your meeting, a work session, and then attend the long-term facility meeting.
Any other discussion? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.